Thursday, January 21st, 2016, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. All members are present and a quorum has been established. Is there anyone who wishes to speak before the commission today? Not offhand? Great. The disposition of minutes. Is there anything that anyone wished to point out for change, amendments, additions, et cetera?
I will read them.
Okay. I'll second. All in favor? Aye. And that's unanimous. There are no cases today before the commission. Communications, 12/14 West Union Street update. Paula, is that what you -- would that be you?
Yes. I wanted to bring back before the entire planning commission. We, at our last meeting, we saw a preliminary review of this modification with the elimination of the basement and additional height. Since that time, the law director did review the request on behalf of Kerry Hunter, on behalf of the Kerry Larch Trust, indicating as our Title 41, which is on our agenda today as well, and that what I provided, it was 4110B? B? If I see this right. Increased building mass of a principal structure through an increase in height, length, or percent of lot coverage. Their claim was there was no increase in the math. They provided mass, excuse me, they provided the math calculations that stated the original design, three stories plus a basement, had a mass of 163,733 cubic feet. The new design, four floors without a basement, had a ma -- will have a mass of 163,578 feet with a decrease in volume of 155 cubic feet. So even though I feel that the intention was that if there was an increase in height, length, or percent of lot coverage, that it would come back for review, we're being told the beginning of it stating increased building mass through those is what has, you know, the legal review. So as we've been talking about some changes to Title 41, and I will be speaking about that later today, that left me with the position to deem it a minor modification, not needing the full planning commission's review.
Any comments on that?
I will comment somewhat on this. I mean, the term "mass" is an odd word that have been used to begin with. It creates, it's ambiguous even in my communications at the state level that they indicated that mass is not something that they operate in at all nor have used. So it's, again, with the intent of what was, you know, was used, by default, the term "mass" creates a problem in that language itself. So it might be something for city council to explore, or John, for you to explore and craft something if you feel like it needs to be changed and clarified, but...
I did, and actually, I met with the architects about it, and I think we just all said where it says increased building mass of a principal structure through an increase in height and then above grade. Just add that terminology in there defines the mass area we're talking about.
Still be left with that.
Simplify it a little better. And maybe "mass" is not the word. It probably should be square footage.
Yeah, that's what I'm wonder -- I'm wondering if, I think as long as you keep that increased building mass in front of this, that's going to be the foundational tenet legally. So I think probably if our concern is being able to see things that increase in height above, you know, ground level and lot coverage and things like that, yeah, I think we need to like just get rid of the notion of mass and maybe, maybe talk about the individual things that we want to be able to look at.
Nancy?
Well, I guess I was concerned about two things, and it's probably too late to express them, but I wondered if this building had a water problem, and it's not many feet wide. Didn't somebody else have a water problem too? And why didn't we hear about that?
The difference is that they, because of the request to do the bank in the lower level, they were going to go very deep so they can put in half substantial ceiling heights and a drop ceiling to hide all their mechanicals for the rest of the building, where any other building up there may have a basement, but they're relatively shallow because they're so old. They were actually going to go be going down almost 14 feet on this one, while most of them are seven, eight feet. So that's the difference.
But 14 feet is not very deep.
Well, that's true.
And I also wonder, I would also, this is something you brought up just a moment ago, but I don't, I think grade would have to be defined in the code as well if that's, if you're going to employ that. Did the square footage, I risk bringing down the wrath of Mr. Adjutant on this, but is square footage include the drop ceilings or not?
Not, square footage is only footprint of the floor.
I mean, the cubic feet?
Cubic, the entire cubic footage of mass was calculated, including the area within the drop ceiling, yes. It was the entire block of the structure.
What a useless thing that was, anyway. I mean, that particular metric. Okay, last thing was, well, it accomplished something that I was interested in, and that is we got it prettied up. I mean, so all's well that ends well as far as I'm concerned.
Any additional comment on West Union Street?
For what it's worth, the Historic Preservation Commission did meet with the architects on that project a week ago, Monday last week. They approved it. There were a few minor modifications to the architectural renderings, to the materials. One of the things that the planning commission mentioned two weeks ago was concern about what they were looking at, this large kind of white box on the very top. They did change the materials on that, and what they presented was brick to the, so they took your comments into concern, and they were pleased about that. And they, at that meeting, they, most of the commissioners all actually, actually preferred the new renderings to what was presented to them back in 2015. They thought the building fit better.
If there's no additional comment on West Union Street, Mr. Loeb, do you want to discuss the Title 41 general review?
I wasn't sure how we wanted to approach this, to be perfectly honest with you. We did, I believe we put packets, or at least a copy of Title 41 in the plan, or in your package this morning or afternoon. Title 41's been on the books for longer than I've been employed at the city, so we're talking at least eight years now. I'm not sure how many site plan reviews we've done. Nancy, at the last meeting, she specifically mentioned in the minutes that she did not think Title 41 process has become a lengthy reactive process and suggested that changes be considered that would allow the process to be more streamlined and proactive. So I don't know if you'd like to maybe elaborate a little bit more on your thoughts on that?
Thanks. I would, I guess I would say the experience that I never had because I replaced Harry Kanasheki would be one that I would suggest we restart, and that would be having a review committee that would precede it and possibly figure out what questions needed to be asked at these hearings.
Okay.
That's more what I was thinking, that, you know, we really don't need a blow-by-blow of everything. We can all read if we do our homework. But, you know, I may be the only one that feels that way because I remember those days. And that's the way also regional planning commission used to work.
Right.
I mean, I don't know that they do because we haven't had many cases, but they would have that, especially with environmental things.
Right. Well, it's always been my understanding that Title 41 was, it's, it came out of the comprehensive planning process that Athens did about 10 years ago. I believe that the language is almost verbatim identified. It's included in the appendix as a recommendation of the comprehensive plan. It came out of a concern from the public and from a lot of people that how things were getting approved wasn't clear to the public. Things were just all of a sudden one day were being torn down and being built, and they wanted a better, just a more transparent process so that at least at a minimum projects were more better covered, I suppose, more transparency of the process. Whether the actual site plan review process that's in Title 41, whether it's effective, whether the timelines make sense, I think it was interesting just our conversation two weeks ago about 14 West Union, the, our understanding that it would need to go back through the same process to make a slight change to something, knowing that it already meets code. You know, when a project meets code, do we need to actually go through that whole process again and understand the time constraints to developers and people who want to get things moving based on weather condition and when they want, I don't know, but...
But a lot of, a lot of Title 41 derives maybe from the transparency aspect?
And that certainly has come. I mean, we have a lot more transparency, I think, with how our projects are built. The media covers them a lot better. We get some feedback. So I think that part has been achieved. And I know internally, if you talk with city staff who are involved with the review process, especially our Public Works and our water guys and our sewer guys, they are far more satisfied with the quality of the development that we, that occurs today with, especially when they have to come out to deal with repairs. We're getting, we're getting the right types of pumps, the right, the right piping and things like that that meet their needs when they have an emergency to respond to. So that's also a very positive thing. Even, there was times in the past 20, 30 years ago where even they weren't aware of what was being constructed until they had to go deal with a broken water main or something like that, and then they realized that the pump wasn't even what they, what should be installed and things like that. So now they have, there's better checks just up front now.
That's the word, internal check and balances has been outstanding. I mean, you know, a project 20 years ago, 15 years ago may have been approved through my office, but didn't go through Engineering Public Works, and here our office was approving a project that didn't have sewer available to it. And now we have that check and balances, and it's between the police and the fire and Engineering Public Works and the code and the flood, flood hazard. It's working very well from an administrative standpoint, to the point where we're actually almost using the same system at a, in a smaller level for projects that aren't even required to go through Title 41. Tim Hortons was a perfect example. It wasn't required to go through Title 41, but we went through the same process and to find things, and we discovered things that potentially could have been a problem in the turning, as we know, the turning situation there was revealed by looking at that one. So we've got a few projects like that on the books now. If, you know, if they're under 5,000 square foot, they do not have to come through. And, but yet, I've been kind of treating them, with the exception maybe of a single-family household, I've been treating pretty much all commercial projects that are ground up in the same format, even though I may not require as much on the drawings as is what required through the Title 41 for a larger project. We still want to make sure that all the, you know, Engineering Public Works is wanting to make sure all the details for water and sewer taps and the curb cut elevations and all of that stuff coincides with each other. And I, I think it's been working very well from that standpoint. And then the timing wise, you know, the way I've been doing it now is when we get the projects in, by the time we do a preliminary review, we try to get the stuff passed. So really, it's not even coming to the planning commission anymore. Most of the time with these, if you remember, we were approving before with conditions, the condition that this is met, condition this is met. And we're trying to get most of them conditions resolved prior to even coming here now. So it takes maybe another two to four weeks from our standpoint before it comes here, but those are things we're trying to resolve. There may be situations where it doesn't go to the shade tree yet, or the shade tree's not resolved. Items like that are some small, small things that may be an issue, but overall, you know, the ones I just approved last, or this week for the various projects that we just recently did, the most conditions we had on any one of them were two to three, three on the one on Columbus Road, and they were very, very small conditions, just the Andy wanted a detail on the water tap, a detail on the sewer tap. They provided that, and, you know, so they're, they're good to go now, so it's...
Would you make a distinction between the type of client who comes before the planning commission as far as like some of the bigger projects versus some, some smaller things?
Everybody's treated equally.
Okay.
Have to. So treat everyone the same. So I mean, I, I don't think of the large project, does it require more review? Absolutely, because it's drawings that thick. I mean, we spent a lot of time, I think all of us know on Rivergate, look at the extensive amount of drawings and all the detail and all the things they had and the number of variances they had. So I guess, you know, to say that it's, everyone's treated equally, yeah, but they were, they were treated equally, but they just had to provide much more, and they did, so...
Ms. Bain?
I guess I'll reiterate what I said earlier. I would think that meeting all of the internal controls would be a good idea, and those could be announced and they could be reviewed in case somebody makes a mistake. But I don't know why we are spending as much time on them as we do. And sometimes, again, and I may just be a burs in your saddle, but questions don't get answered. And it is reactive, and I would also like you to go back to what Pogomire sent us, and because I know we compromised, I remember, I won't name names, but a number of people wanted some of the site plan review items changed with respect to what, what it was applicable. And if we are changing it without changing the law, I think we should at least minimally do that as well as the gross area, if we're making everyone come regardless of size. And also the zones.
We're not making everyone come regardless of size. I'm kind of treating them the same way from our standpoint internally, but they're not required to come here, so...
Well, then, you just talked about Tim Hortons.
Tim Hortons did come because they, they wanted to do so. They wanted the public outreach, and they wanted to let everyone know, but they were not required to come.
Well, I think that...
It's free advertising for them. Right.
Well, I think it's, you know, we should probably, again, I would say, review what they said, what was supposed to be, what was the preliminary before it got sort of watered down. But, you know, maybe that's just for us to do. And, you know, so this is our chance, but the transparency happens. I mean, remember I fussed about this, and you did do better, John, with respect to having them here more than a day before with plans. And, you know, to your credit, you listened, and that was good. But, you know, I'd even like it, maybe I like the way with bigger projects we have the delay, because people just aren't aware of it. I wonder how many people in town are aware of the pool and all of the rest of that. I mean, people just don't, it's not on the radar screen. It isn't. And I think that if you're going to do the transparency thing as this is supposed to do, I'm not sure it does right now, and maybe a little more time, maybe publicity, but, you know, going over it and then voting on it, I don't think that's what we...
Well, but I, I think that transparency aspect, if we don't think, if you don't think that that's effective, that needs to be written into the code, into this chapter. What kind of transparency do we want? This says we have to have a sign, and I might even say the size, but we have to be consistent so that we're not putting a billboard up for one project and eight and a half by 11 placard for another one, because then we're trying to draw attention to one versus the other, so we have to stay consistent. But, you know, there's a sign up, there was a sign up on Union Street.
I think it's silly.
Leaning up against a...
A real estate sign.
A fence.
Or a political sign.
Leaning up against a fence on a part of the sidewalk that's closed, because that's what the court said we have to do, like it's, so I guess I'm saying if we want to, if we need to get the word out somehow, that has to be built into this language, and I, it seems like the planning commission should probably be the body who really says this is how we think it should go.
Even though it was...
Previously, this ordinance actually said that a copy of the documents were supposed to be filed at the public library. And, and we were... An applicant went and, or an architect took a stack of documents to the public library, and they said, "We don't do that work. We're not, we're not going to keep architectural blueprints on reserve for, for the city." Nobody at the city even told us that they were going to do that. It was just written into the code, but this, this code is pretty common across the state and across the country. These are, this, this was not a brand-new concept. This was a cut and paste, or, I bet if you started, if you took this page and cut and pasted it and put it into Google, you would probably get 200 other communities have a very, almost identical site plan review process as what we have here. The, just sentences would pop up verbatim in other cities.
Your question, that's the way you do things, isn't it?
What's that?
I said, I don't think there's any question, but...
We do that, right. But I guess we do that because it's been written and it's effective.
Pass the ORC.
Right, you know?
Tests.
And the other part that I want to point out is it states in the intent is not to prevent construction of a project.
But ours...
I mean, I think that needs to be, but are we going to change that? Is what I'm saying.
No. Why would we change that? You always make it better. That's what the whole purpose of this is, to improve, to find the defects. I don't think anybody ever thinks about that. And we put that in as a, a sign that this is what we were about, not about stopping something. You'd have to be naive to think we would stop something.
If, if our goal is to try to improve the language in Title 41, are we saying that, are we, is it the intent, and I guess I'm asking you Nancy, since you're being the most vocal here, but...
I'm just...
To make it better for everyone, for the five commissioners, city staff, the public, as well as the applicant?
I think you know the answer to, I mean...
I don't know.
I'm, it's complicated.
Because we hear from everybody, you know, we, we hear that the, the planning commission would like it to be better. We hear from the contractors and the architects and the applicants that they would like it to be a more streamlined process on their half, that they find it to be cumbersome. And I, by all means, I acknowledge the need for transparency with everything we do at the city, and I think that's a very important part of it.
I think that's, that's a mantra that people utter, but do they, when we get it, we see, review it, and in two weeks they have it. I don't see, if they don't, if they bring us a half-baked document, then what do they expect without all this stuff done?
I'm just trying to understand what the planning commission, if they want to change things with...
Well, I'm the only one, and I can go away.
And, do we want to do it at the planning commission level?
Is there a second?
Go ahead and second.
If we can maybe create a list of specific material outcomes that we would like to see from this process, so that we have like, these are the goals, and then maybe each of us take some time, whether it's between now and the next meeting, or maybe a little bit longer, to look at, look at the document and see how perhaps those outcomes could be achieved.
And I would say, you did, you were with me on the last time, weren't you, when we talked about this a little bit? I can't remember the minutes, I didn't go back and read them, but I thought you also expressed, I mean, it's not about, I mean, it's about not stopping, it's about improving.
Right, right. I totally agree, and I think, you know, obviously this, this 12/14 West Union Street identified an issue that needs to be addressed. So, so absolutely, there are issues, I think, that need to be addressed in the, in the text. But I do think, like, to be productive, we do need to figure out, like, kind of specify, like, this is what I want to happen, like, this is...
I may be the only one that wants to go.
Well, but, I mean, you know, even if you are the only one, like, we can talk about the specific outcomes and decide whether the rest of us agree with those outcomes. And, you know, from that point, then figure out, like, how can we amend this text in a way that while remaining kind of within the constraints of the Ohio Revised Code and whatever else, we can accomplish those things.
Right, and I would like to recall that we were trying very hard to get corridor plans done, and we spent months when we didn't even look at them. And then we also did a revision to the code, which we spent months on, and it didn't get done, because my concern was site plan review became the center of our one-hour meeting. And either we have to increase our meeting size or streamline something.
Well, I will, I will, I will say, I will volunteer, if we can come up with a list of, of specific material outcomes that we would like to see achieved, I'll volunteer to meet with Paul and John separately from our meetings to try to work on language.
Yeah, but that's, it's not that. I mean, that's wonderful, and we should do that, but I think that all, all the work we did on corridors is languishing because we're unable to get to it because of the time. We have two hours, basically, a month, 24.
Right.
And that's not enough to do, I mean, we're, not that we are planners, because we are not, but it's the planning commission's work that doesn't get done.
I would contend the corridors are going to go forward through the comprehensive plan update.
Well, that's...
I think that we've done a nice base to at least provide that.
If they get it, yeah.
But I also want to state, you point out the intent is not to prevent construction. We've all confirmed that, but the intended to provide a means and process to review the proposed development of sites to minimize negative off-site impacts, address traffic and pedestrian circulation, and provide for public safety and efficient services. I don't want to lose sight of that.
It has to stay in there.
You know, when we talk about Columbus Road and you bring up the fact of where's, where is the right of way, and what's the setback, and what's the future, that is a greater planning kind of question, so...
But the, but, you know, again, I feel frustrated sometimes, because a lot of times my questions don't get answered, and it may just be I'm a pain in the, you know, whoop in the butt, but, because I wanted to know the setbacks, and I wanted to know this, and is the setback enough? And now we have another mess with, well, not a mess, but integrated services. The question is, what's the setback? And, you know, if it's zero, maybe we ought to change it in some, where it provides, you know, that's something I didn't visualize, because I should have gone out and stood there and looked at it and said, "Oh, my goodness, that's going to be really close to where we..."
Where are we? Where are you in that?
We're done with it. We are done with it.
But where, location?
On Charles.
On Charles.
You didn't read your letters.
Right out on the road, but our ball control's for a beat.
But again, did that really address traffic and pedestrian circulation? Did it minimize any negative off-site impacts? So that's, that's...
Yeah, well, we don't have any power to change that, I don't think, unless we change the code.
I'm interested in looking back at Pogomire's original...
Yeah, me too.
Recommendation.
And, you know, that, maybe I'll do that one. Christie's doing the other.
If, if I may, if, it would be, it's, it would be really appreciative if Christie, I'd be happy to, John, I would be happy to meet with Christie. I will say, though, that the, the name that is all over Title 41 is Service Safety Director. And so I think it'd be really useful for the Service Safety Director to be in those meetings as well. In fact, technically, all applications are supposed to be filed with not the Service Safety Director and/or his or her designee, but, you know, a permit is supposed to be issued at, by the Service Safety Director to even kick in this process, and, and so it seems like we should, that, that person needs to be in these meetings as well, because that might be language that we actually want to change in the document or in code, that maybe it should actually be filed directly with the Office of Code Enforcement. I'm not sure why it was ever said that it should go to the Safety Director when every other permit is almost exclusively managed at the code office, but...
I think just as a matter of, a small matter, I've always been curious why, for instance, the Shade Tree Commission has to approve something after we've approved something.
They don't have to.
Depending, I mean, what I'm asking is why, why can't that be done before?
If the schedule allows for that to happen, then that's the way we do it. But in many instances, the developers are trying to move forward, and the Shade Tree meeting coincidentally comes on the second Tuesday or Thursday of the month, where if we're meeting on, if it's an application that's in on the first Thursday of the month, then it's, just the way at timing it falls out. I'm trying to get to do, through the Shade Tree more often, and that's one of the things I wrote down just on the code, and Paul and I discussed that. Why, why isn't the Shade Tree requirements in Title 23?
I think it was...
And why is it its own chapter? It should probably be in Title 23 as part of the zoning process, much like signs are.
I think because they didn't want to change, go through the council for changing, because council has, you know, it adds time. Likewise, 41, likewise, the development, land development ordinance, it's all having to do with how tedious it is to change because of the ORC requirements on it. That was a council decision, and I wasn't on that committee.
Any other comment on the Title 41?
Other than all, all the amenities, please.
Yeah. Well, whoever else needs to be, too.
You can say no, I, I just think it'd be really, your voice is really important.
I mean, there's, there's other things to change. I mean, we, we got the, the five file print copies and one, we're in electronic age today. You know, I have them bring in maybe two or three drawings so that we can actually, one for, to bring uptown and one for Engineering Public Works, one for myself, and then, why waste paper? I mean, I got drawing after drawing of multiple sets that don't even get issued, that are rolled up in my office and end up down in the basement. So I've been telling them to change what, bring in what you really need. Is it per code? No, but those are things that we can look at, too, so...
Ms. Bain?
If I may, I mean, this is, to me, as I'm listening and engaged, you know, with Title 41, with Title 23, with a lot of other code, you know, this is, again, to me in my mind, one more reason why we need to go through a thorough code review and revisions if need be. I mean, there's a lot of clunky, unnecessary, old items that are in code, you know, so, you know, I'm hoping that city council will engage in that as well to go through, but your office in particular, I mean, this, it's, it's code, so, you know.
Sort of polling the property development.
Absolutely.
Can I make one quick request? So, if maybe between now and the next time we meet, if the members of the commission could look through Title 41 in depth, when we return, like, have specific concerns that everybody feels like needs to be addressed, we can talk through those briefly to kind of figure out, like, what is a consistent concern among the members of the planning commission? And then from that point, I'll meet with Paula, Paul, John, whoever else needs to be involved, and, you know, try to, try to come up with something in terms of language that we can submit to the law director to make sure it's gonna pass muster in terms of the state and whatever else needs to be, to be done, and then we can kind of return and discuss it as a body. Does that sound like a good idea?
Sounds like a good proposal.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to kick off the comprehensive master plan?
Sure, well, I won't kick it off. It's already in place.
Introduce it.
Certainly. This is something that I believe is, is needed in moving forward, is to, not moving forward, but to, to look at the next 20 years out with the comprehensive plan. As I've mentioned before, we're in year 12, 13, 14, somewhere in that timeframe with the comprehensive, the existing comprehensive plan. I don't think the comprehensive plan, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. There's a lot that's, that's been achieved, there's, that's been accomplished, there's a lot that, that has yet to be accomplished, but I think a fair amount of what is in the original document has been, we've attained those things. So we just need to start thinking, moving forward. But I'm also very much aware that the original comprehensive plan, planning group was large. Help me out, Paul, that there was some 40 individuals, each in small groups within that, that were working on different sections with titles under the comprehensive plan. And I have reached out to council to consider re-engaging the Athens City Comprehensive Plan Review Advisory Commission, but I think that's, I think what needs to happen is that, as I understand it, within the comprehensive plan with the original planning group, the council didn't form this group till later to help kind of vet what was going on. So rather than put the cart before the horse, I think that we should have, again, I don't know if it needs to be a full 40-member body, since we have the plan, it's just revising the plan and moving forward, but I would defer to, to you, Paul, to kind of figure out the best path forward rather than council to put together a body of individuals, a group for this commission that may not have anything to do for, for months, if not years.
Yeah, that, that commission was established as a standing commission that was supposed to guide implementation and tracking of the actual, establishing benchmarks to determine whether things were actually moving in the right direction, whether things were changing, things were being improved, et cetera. It was really fixated on metrics, not on, not on drafting a plan. Now, the, there was like an ad hoc steering committee that was formed to actually do the plan. I did find, I dug out some of the documents, and just the steering committee alone had, well, at least in this document, there was 18 members of the steering committee that were interviewed, as well as about 15 others who were interviewed just to kind of get a broad stroke as to what to focus on and what that group of stakeholders thought was important. But the, the steering committee included the mayor, city council members, OU student senate, county planning, Ohio University administration, Lee Axe Water District, the Metro Housing Authority, ACENet, car dealerships, realtors, neighborhood organizations, the housing authority, landlords. It was rather large, and I think, I, I don't think we want to jump in that far next month. I think we probably want to start small and really figure out, like, our outline of what, what should this plan look like and really identify the, the whole process that we want to be moving through. And I'm, I'm happy to, to try to at least put a framework together that I think might be the right steps for us to take, and then get some comment back on that. I don't know if that's something that the planning commission needs to, to actively engage with, or if the, if the commissioners just want to be updated on what's going on, and then as we actually start jumping into the details of kind of the discussions as to what needs fixed, or what do we need to focus on, if that's where the planning commissioners should come in, and then council, or what? Whether we're talking an ad hoc to start and then moving forward, or some sort of a small task force.
Nancy brought her Athens Comprehensive Plan Visioning Workshop results in steering committee.
Right.
And when the steering commission then had, like, seven, is that right? Did it go any further? Seven different categories?
Right.
But I would hope that we'd be participating, even if it's attending the public open houses and-
I would hope so, too.
I would believe council made this decision, I mean, made that committee.
Yeah, you need that document.
Hey, Paul, I think council made the committee because it's in the plan that they were supposed to do this.
Right.
Okay.
They did, correct, right.
Because it, up till now, I hadn't heard that, or at least I wasn't listening, so.
And if you, but if you read the ordinance from what they created, it, it's very narrow, actually, what their purpose is even, what they're even tasked with. They, they're given three purposes, one of which is to do an annual report. Purpose A, develop a system of benchmarks and ongoing performance measurements for the, the comprehensive plan, coordinate citizen involvement in review of the progress towards benchmarks and implementation of the plan, and then do a public, an annual report. That commission did exist for a while. It was in about 2011 or 2012, I believe, was the last time that they convened, and it essentially got to a point where the, the membership, membership of it didn't think they could actually fulfill that duty, that they needed somebody, almost like a consulting firm, to actually gauge whether the plan was being implemented or not. When you look at what's in the plan, strategies and recommendations for how the city should be moving forward, those are a lot of things that we've accomplished in the last seven or eight years. And so now it's just time to say what, you know, what is still valid in the plan, what, what was missed, what are kind of some of the new directions, what are some of the new best practices, and how do we want to grow? Where do we want to be focusing on? I'll, I'll try to get something for the next meeting or, or so, just some sort of a framework.
Okay. Any other comment?
I had, I didn't put it on, I don't know, but I feel obligated to recognize that as planning commission members, we've received additional correspondence from citizens regarding bed and breakfasts in R1 neighborhoods. So we acknowledge that, but that has been passed on to council, is my understanding, that they'll hold a public hearing in the future to continue the bed and breakfast discussion.
Has that been brought up at council yet? They had a public hearing, but, have they had any readings on it?
Bed and breakfast, come up to council?
There was a public hearing, I thought, in December, and I may be wrong about that.
I have a copy of an email sent from a resident of Elmwood Place, or concerns about the-
Two, correct. I received those as well, two concerns from within the Near East neighborhood about bed and breakfast. And also within those, both those letters referring as well specifically to Airbnb, but we've also heard, well, at the diet, or at the podium, you know, the flip side of that, too, you know, having Airbnbs, so.
My understanding is that it will be brought forth at some future council meeting, but that hasn't been scheduled.
Right, that's my understanding as well. I, I think-
The draft agenda, Monday's not there.
Right. But remember, Paul is, is working on that.
I, I would say something, it, it seems like there is some disconnect or some discommunication about what the planning commission has recommended and sent to council, and what people think planning commission has recommended and sent to council, because I'm hearing people in my neighborhood saying, well, I, I know the planning commission has said R1s and R2s. And I'm going, no, 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 absolutely not, that's not true. Oh, no, no, I have it on good authority. R1s and R2s? No, 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 it's not. And I'm saying, I, you know, where is this coming from? But it's just one of those rumors that once it gets going, it takes a life of its own, it will just continue. So even though I've been trying to put the word out, no, that's not what has come out of the planning commission, and as far as I know, has not yet been considered by any member of council, other than in passing constituents. So maybe we need better communication or something? We're back to that again, but I, I don't have an answer.
I can tell you, we have one on the Board of Zoning Appeals Agenda for Tuesday next month for Richland Avenue, which I questioned, as I did before, whether it's even required to go to Board of Zoning Appeals, but I'm keeping standing consistent, so it's going through as a conditional use.
I did not attend council on Monday, Tuesday, but I was told that someone was there to speak again about bed and breakfasts, specifically Airbnb, indicating that there were still some in operation in the city.
In an R1.
Might I remind individuals that you can go online to Airbnb and see what's out there anywhere, so.
And they have received letters from us, most of them, some we have not been able to identify.
If there's no other comment on the comprehensive master plan, we can move to reports.
I have one more thing, I apologize. I did, I made copies of the, the Bowling Green, Ohio's master plan, which was completed last year. It won, it won an award by the State Chapter of the Ohio Planning, or American Planning Association in 2015 for Best Small Town Plan. So I brought it in just as an example of another college town in Ohio that's very recent, it's very good. It's actually very lean, too, which I think the whole document's only 60 pages, and our comprehensive plan was 200, 300 pages, probably, maybe 400 if you throw in the appendix and everything else, and show that, you know, different options for how to even approach a plan.
Did Pogomire do that?
Mr. Mayor?
They did not. They did almost all in-house. They had, I think, one small consultant from, I want to say Colorado, who assisted, but that was a very small, one or two-person outfit. They kept it pretty clean. Yeah, they're based, Pogomire's based in Toledo.
How long ago was that approved?
Uh, I believe it's dated 2014. Um, yeah, 2014 it was done. Approved October 20th, 2014.
So it at least has up, is recent as 2014 in terms of best practices in there.
Correct, right. Yeah, it's a pretty good document, so I have copies for you, the commissioners.
Mr. Logue, do you want to go ahead with your report?
I think I covered everything, actually. I mentioned what the Historic Preservation Commission's doing, and we talked about the comprehensive plan. I did attend a meeting yesterday, it's, it might be of interest to some, some members of the planning commission. The Upgrade Athens County folks facilitated with some nonprofit organization out of Ohio called Clean Fuels Ohio, which talked about how to use electric vehicles for fleets, as well as alternatives to gasoline-powered, so propane and things like that, for fleet vehicles. And we're, we're interested in trying to set up a, an event of some sort in Athens in the next few months, where they can actually bring a whole, several vehicles to Athens. They allow for city municipal organizations to actually, like, test drive electric vehicles and things for up to a week at a time, so they can see how they handle in real-world conditions. I thought that was a pretty interesting program they were working on. And then we had a really good discussion, I think from a planning perspective, we had a really good discussion about the lack of infrastructure in southeast Ohio for electric vehicles, meaning that there's no charging stations between, I want to say, there's nothing between Athens and almost downtown Columbus. And so a lot of the electric vehicles that exist right now, they can't make it to Columbus, or they're, they're running almost on empty, more or less, if they get to Columbus. But there are options or opportunities where you don't need a, the infrastructure for a charging station can just be this small utility put into a parking space. And so there's a discussion about, is that something that the city could maybe be, would be interested in doing, setting up some electric vehicle charging stations at the community center so somebody can charge their vehicle for, for, for a fee, they don't get it for free, while they're working out, or while they're attending a council meeting, or while they're doing something uptown. That's been a model that's been pretty common around the U.S., but we don't, we haven't stepped forward with that yet.
Do we know when the date of this?
It hasn't been set yet. They basically, the organization out of Columbus said they'd be happy to do something in Athens with us, and I said, I would work with the city and upgrade Athens to try to make it happen. Very interesting, enlightening meeting.
I've, I've been tracking this a little bit, and I, as I understand it as well, when it comes to fleet vehicles, there are some programs out there as well that will, if you purchase X number of vehicles, you'll get a Type 2 charging station.
Right.
Possibly at no car, at no charge. There are charging stations in the city of Athens, they were at Ohio University, but in the municipality, there are, the city doesn't have any charging stations at this point.
And they were meeting, Upgrade Athens was a meeting with Ohio University officials this afternoon, I believe, to talk about that, because they seem to be under the impression that those charging stations were only limited to university staff and, and students, they weren't open to the general public, but.
Mr. Paskey?
I think I've covered everything already, so I'm, I'm good. Show your sidewalks.
There's no one in the audience to address the planning commission announcements and other business?
As John stated, the winter storms are coming, it's gonna hit us one way or the other, so everybody-
Three to five or four to eight.
Bunker down, have your supplies today.
Go, library.
Our next meeting will be February 4th, 2016, and with our business concluded, this meeting is adjourned.